We'll start off by, I guess, let me just open the meeting. This is the Nottingham Planning Board meeting Wednesday, May 12th, 2021 at seven o'clock. In anticipation of the extension of Executive Order 2021-06, the Nottingham Planning Board will hold a virtual hearing. Access to the meeting is given through Zoom. All members of the board have been, have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform. The public has access contemporaneously to listen and if necessary, participate in the meeting. If you do have any issues with your link or connection, please go ahead and contact Joanna at the Planning Zone. That number is 603-679-9597. And throughout the meeting, I would like to just have everybody, please self-monitor your mute button. Please just pay attention to that. I know it's difficult sometimes, but if you can just pay attention to that and we can hold a relatively impactful meeting, impact-less meeting from distractions. I see Steph is able to join us, so we're just gonna get going. I do want to do a roll call of the Planning Board members that are here at the meeting. So if each one would just identify that you are able to hear and communicate. Ed Veale?
Present.
Ian McKinnon?
Here.
Susan Mooney?
Here.
Gary Anderson?
Here.
Tyler Eaton?
Here.
Robert Davies?
Here.
Leanne Gass? Okay, Leanne is not here. Okay, so there's a couple of things before we get into our hearings tonight. One is we have a volunteer from Nottingham Public to potentially fill a vacant seat that's been on the Planning Board for about six months. We have a seat after Joe Clough had left. He moved out of town. That seat has remained vacant for probably more than six months. And we have continually encouraged other townfolk to come in and volunteer. One has taken us up on that, and that's Charlene Anderson. Charlene has acted on the board previously. She's been involved with other municipal boards and committees, and including a master plan committee. And I would like to nominate her to that vacant seat. And I would like to have a board vote on that. But prior to doing that, we do this vacancy because it's from Joe Clough. His term, well, the vacancy can only be held until the next municipal vote. And the next vote is, or election is June 8th. And therefore, it'll only be for a meeting or two. At which case, the citizens would elect that board member for that seat. And we're encouraging, or at least I am, Charlene, to get some write-in votes because her name would not be on that ballot. I also want to mention that I believe Gary and Susan are also, their terms were up and they are thankfully rerunning. And they are also currently on the ballot for positions, so for seats. So I guess I would like a, I guess I'd make a motion to appoint Charlene Anderson to the vacant seat, which Joe Clough had previously held. I guess I'd look for a second.
Second.
All right, so any discussion? Charlene, I don't know if you would like to say a couple of words in this, or if any other board members have questions of Charlene before we go ahead and vote?
Well, she's on mute, but while she's coming off, I think it's three meetings, including this one, if she were appointed. Because we have one in June, that's the day after the elections. But that's a, would be the same board at that time until the next, until swearing, so. Be three.
Great.
Yeah, so, you know, I just want to, you know, say that I've been, served on the Planning Board in the past, worked on the master plan. The, quite a few years ago, when it was a big, big lift. So I was there as a community member at the time. And then I've worked, when I was on the Planning Board, with the revisions to the impact fees. So I'm familiar with a lot of what the Planning Board does. And then also, as Dirk had mentioned, I've been on several other boards in town and been involved in, in the town for many, many years. Thanks.
Any questions for Charlene? Go ahead, Gary.
Yes, just like to say, thanks for stepping up again, Charlene, and kind of welcome back because, yep, we've served together in the past. And so hopefully that will, this will, yeah, you'll get that right in and we'll see you further on.
Okay.
Yes, yes, this is Susan. I too would like to welcome Charlene back to the Planning Board and thank her for stepping up to this position.
Yeah. Okay, let me do a roll call vote. That would be for appointment of Charlene to the vacant seat. Charlene Anderson, Ed Veale?
Yes.
Ian McKinnon?
Yes.
Susan Mooney?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Tyler Eaton?
Yes.
And chair votes, yes. So welcome, Charlene, and I will seat you as the vacant seat. So you have full voting rights this evening.
Thank you all.
And if you're a little rusty, then you can lean on us, no problem, because we're rusty too. Okay, so let me move into our other meeting, public meeting, and that was a home occupation conceptual from Sean Flanagan. It's an owner of 17 Shannon Drive in Nottingham to buy and sell firearms. So I would like to turn the floor over to Sean Flanagan. We received a application for a home occupation. And before the board, we, the staff, in the planning staff, would like to get, get clarification on what the board sees this. It is not listed as a allowable home occupation, but it's also not disallowed. It's not mentioned in it, any of the home occupation items. So we should listen to Mr. Flanagan and find out a little bit more information. So if it's a minor home occupation, then the permit is issued by, or there is no permit. The code enforcement officer would just make sure that it's compliant. If it is a major home occupation, then it needs the approval of the board. And it would have, be a site plan application format that would come before the board. So this is a conceptual. In this time is, at conceptuals, there's no binding decisions or information that is given to the applicant, a potential applicant. Just a sense from the board on the right path of what that person should take, or that applicant should take. So with that, let me turn that over to Mr. Flanagan. And if you can describe your proposed home occupation.
I appreciate it, thank you, and thank you all for fitting me in tonight and listening. I, so I, the background on this is I started at the end of last year. It's going through the process of consideration of applying for my FFL, my federal firearms license, to purchase, buy and sell firearms and accessories. And so I, originally in January, January 26th or 27th, I think it was, I have written down, I called the town office to just clarify what might be needed, if anything, as far as for a home-based business, because it's going to be such a small type of thing. I'm, it's gonna be, I'm operating at home. But she, I was pointed to the website with the, all the information as far as home occupation. And I read through that, I looked at it. As you had mentioned as well, Dirk, it said that, it doesn't say whether it's permitted or not permitted. And I looked at the home occupation, also minor occupations or major occupations. And by the definition of when I was reading through the minor occupation, it seemed that that's what it is. I mean, it's, if we, I don't know if you want to read that out loud, but you guys all know that, I'm sure, pretty well. But anyway, so then, following up on that, I submitted my application to the ATF in March 2021. I also submitted a completed application, a copy, to Chief Woodman, as required by the ATF. She received that sometime in March as well, the end of March. And I had my ATF interview, Boston Area Agent came out April, just this past, April 26th. About a three or four hour interview went through. She asked me a lot of questions about the intent of everything, what we're doing with it, and then we went through a lot of processes. I think the scary thing is, when people hear firearms, they get a little nervous. It's basically, you know, the majority of the business is online. I mean, 99.9% of this business is online. And I think I sent another email to Joanna too, to explain that. I put on the application that you see, or the site, the home occupation information, that by appointment only, there's absolutely no reason that anyone needs to come on my property. So there's no additional traffic, there's no signage, there's nothing that's going to show that even a business exists. I've been here about 18 years, Tyler Eaton's my neighbor. I don't think he's ever seen too many cars coming from my house, he probably won't either, in that respect. But it's, you know, it's a pretty thorough process with the ATF, federal regulations, state regulations. And the little piece of it that I'm missing right now, in order to move forward, is the zoning, the local zoning. So that's, so I'm here to answer any questions, or, you know, explain anything, if you need more detail. So if that helps, great, but yeah, any questions I can answer would be, would be great, so.
Okay, could you just maybe describe what, what it would entail? Like, are you bringing firearms in and then out, or are they?
Sure.
Yeah, are they customers that might stop by, or?
Yeah.
Sure.
So again, the, for me, there's no real need for anybody to stop by unless they're a local friend that needs something done gunsmithing-wise or whatever, which I would be licensed to do. But for me, it's pretty much online sales, gun sites, gun shows, estates, and then word-of-mouth, personal situations or opportunities that may, that may come across my way. You know, FedEx, UPS would be the main methods of shipping for things. I ship to other FFLs, so I don't ship to personal people, I can't, you know, by law, and I wouldn't do that. So it's mostly off-site is where everything takes place. And what I, I do have, you know, I have to have standards here, I have to have everything at storage. But the amount of firearms I would have on-site at any one time is probably less than most of your neighbors probably have in their house that you don't even know about. It's just very minimal. I mean, it's gonna be a handful of, I'm gonna focus mostly on pistols. I don't really want to do much with long rifles, for a business, anyway. And yeah, so that's pretty much how it's gonna work, off-site.
Okay.
This office you see, so like a 10 by 11 space, this is really, this is it. My computer, I have double screens, this is my setup, this is where I'm gonna work from. The downstairs side, if you look at the plan, that's in my basement. It's a wall area, which will have a table, which is a little workstation, and a safe, which is where everything will be stored, that has to be stored away.
Great. Let me just read off what we have as home occupation, our definition. So a minor home occupation is a home occupation in which no persons, other than members of the family residing on a premises, are engaged in the occupation, which has no visible exterior evidence of the conduct, of the conduct of the operation. It does not create a need for off-street parking beyond the normal dwelling needs, does not generate additional traffic. Major home occupation is one in which not more than one person, other than members of the premises, is employed on the premises, and which accommodates both dwelling and home occupation parking needs off-street. Major home occupation requires a permit from the Planning Board. And then further, there are other criteria in our regulations that goes through home occupation. And those are definitely geared towards having in-and-outs and sales, and staff, employee, exterior conditions, you know, storage of commercial vehicles. So just wanted to remind board members of that. Members of the board have questions for Mr. Flanagan?
This is Susan, may I just ask a question, please?
Of course.
If this is going to be a minor home occupation, then it would just go to the code enforcement officer to see it through. If that is so, is there going to be an opportunity for neighbors to express their opinion about this?
No, the only time, the only time that that would be the occasion would be if it was a public meeting and a major home occupation. Then it becomes a site plan application.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I have a question about just clarification.
Yep.
Yeah, so just, so it sounds like, I'm trying to kind of picture Mr. Flanagan, how this is, how the business completely works, and walking myself through it. And so I know you did mention a lot of online sales. And so I'm wondering if some of the sales are direct from your supplier to the client? Or if you are receiving, what percentage are you receiving into your, your location and then sending out? I'm just kind of curious how that works.
Yeah, if I take a firearm into possession, I have to check it in. I have a complete log that I have to fill out, and the ATF has access to, and they run regular checks on, on all the paperwork. Make sure, they do audits, make sure everything's proper, they check all the inventory, make sure everything's up to date. So I can't just like, kind of broker a gun off and just say, hey, I'm gonna turn it, spin it to this guy. It's gotta go through a very formal process. So anything that I take in, I can't take things on, I can't take firearms on consignment. They still consign to me, I still have to put them in the book, and I can sell them, and I can ship them to another FFL in any state that's where it's, where it's legal, which is most of the 50 states. As long as it's going to an FFL who's licensed. If they're an FFL, they are licensed. But I mean, for me, I've been, just a little background on me, I mean, I'm, you know, I've run my own business for 35-plus years. I also work for, during the day, I work for an equipment finance company. Been doing that for a long time. I've got an MBA from Babson University, Babson College, sorry. So as far as running a business, I'm pretty well-versed on running a business. This is a part-time thing for me. I've been teaching with my other business, I, I've been teaching self-defense, martial arts, and defensive tactics for 30-plus years to law enforcement, fishing games, state police, local police. So, and recently, as recently, finally went through and got my pistol certification for instructor, instructor certification, I had six-hour. So one of the things of us branching out with, with our instruction is gonna be like basic firearm safety courses. Those aren't held here, those are held somewhere else. But running into people where the, a lot of times people want to purchase a firearm, they don't know what to do, they don't know what to look for. That's gonna be part of what I do, explaining it to them. And if I can bring them, if I can help them find that firearm for them, whether it's a used firearm or a new one, I'm gonna work mostly with used, then I will do that, and I will give them an opportunity to, you know, to purchase that and exercise their second amendment, right?
Where this is conceptual, you know, we have to kind of keep, we keep it kind of high level. But some of the things normally would come up if this did come before the Planning Board. I mean, I think there'd be questions about, you know, storage and the safety, if there's gonna be any kind of testing of firearms on-site, like ammunition or manufacturer of either firearms or ammunition. What kind of signage, you know, as you get further into an application, like security might be, you know, asked without specific details. Obviously, you don't want to.
Right.
You have the back door with the key underneath the mat.
Yeah.
Things like that. And, and then obviously, the building inspector would chime in as well, as to whether they feel it may be minor or major. We have a permissive zoning ordinance, meaning we usually say what's allowed and everything else is not allowed. The home occupations is a little bit different. And there are some examples in there of what the minor home occupation is, or what type of home occupations are allowed. So I'd be curious to see, you know, either is the board or the building inspector, what, what they feel category that falls into.
And yeah, and one thing too, as far as safety and all, and security, and whether it's alarms or safes or whatever, like I mentioned, the ATF has been here and inspected everything. I've been recommended by them to have the license issued, that's only one part of it. I can't operate without everything else. But they are satisfied with my security, they are satisfied with my storage, they are satisfied with everything that is required by them. And again, that was a pretty in-depth interview and pretty in-depth inspection. You know, it's, I, again, I think it's, you know, I was looking at different things for, again, if people are nervous about firearms, that's, that sounds more like that. But I think the issue to look at is the business itself and, you know, following. If I need to get something more than a minor occupation based on the requirements, that's fine. But if it's hammers, or nails, or firearms, it's, you know, I don't know how the board looks at that, but it sounds, that's more of a regulation issue. And that's more of a state issue than a local issue. I may be wrong on that, but.
I want to point out as well to the board and to public that, you know, as part of our master plan, we also try to key in on some of the economic goals for our community. I just happened to look this one up in our master plan. So one of them is to encourage home occupations that are compatible with rural character of Nottingham without infringing on neighbors' ability to achieve quiet enjoyment of their property. So that is part of our master plan, and I'm just putting that out as a fact.
This is about as loud as it'll be. There is no excess noise, so.
I'd like to say something if I could, and not, we've been neighbors for, I don't know, since, I think we both think about the same. And you couldn't have a better neighbor, and, you know, I don't know if it was somebody different, I'd feel differently. But I, I know this man, and he's a good man.
I appreciate that, that means a lot coming from you, thank you very much.
This, Charlene, this more kind of question for the board. I would imagine whether it's a minor or a major home occupation, the allowance for the home occupation only lasts as long as the proper licenses to run this business is in effect? Or any business that requires licenses?
Yeah, and as well as the home occupation use, it goes away with, if the property owner moves or something like that, or sells. So some of the basic things, I guess, Mr. Flanagan, would be, you know, do you have a commercial vehicle that, you know, is visually a nuisance, or, I shouldn't say a nuisance, but does it have, is it all labeled and all that?
No. Yeah, my, one of the things, I think, and again, Tyler, I appreciate the word you said, but I'm kind of stealth, I try to keep things as low-key as possible. So I have my truck, and my truck is standard truck. I don't have a commercial vehicle for the business. Again, this is a, this is a part-time venture for me, I have a full-time job. It's, you know, 56 years old, as I get older, you know, having extra income with different things is, you know, nice to have. And I see an opportunity in the market where, where things have been, you know, where I've kind of been involved in it for a long time, but things are moving in a very specific direction. I don't, if we want to sit sometime and talk about that, we can. But yeah, no, there's no signage, there's nothing loud about, you know, either in visually or, or, you know, hearing that would, you know, anybody would know, if somebody drove around the cul-de-sac, except for the video recording of this meeting, they would have absolutely zero idea what was happening, going on in the house, as far as the business goes, so.
So it, this being a conceptual design review meeting, or a conceptual review meeting, we're not going to be voting, or there is no really way to say one way or the other. But I would like to just ask the board, if you feel this is a major home occupation, just could you indicate that you do, and, and maybe the reason why? So I think if there's no other compelling reason, this, it does, in my opinion, feel this is a minor home occupation. We just need to provide some guidance to the applicant as well as code enforcement.
Mr. Chairman, I also, I'm with you on that one. I do feel it meets the criteria of minor home occupation. Primarily, you know, like you said, most of his business is online. And there's really not much of a business there, except for some of the materials to support his business.
Yeah. Yeah, and if that changes, obviously if the business grows, you know, good, good for the gentleman. And, you know, it morphs into either a major home occupation or something else, it would have to get a revised permit. And I think Mr. Flanagan had already mentioned, but I want to make sure, you know, we would encourage, if not done so already, just, you know, work with the, also local, like, police, just so that they're aware, and that they can give input as well. And I know there were some state RSAs as well, where the state governs the sale of firearms as well, which I'm sure, it's something you've gone through the ATF process, you've probably started with the state process too, so. After that, yeah, I'd be fine with referring to the building inspector.
Yeah, it's funny you say that, the ATF has to issue their license before the state will issue theirs. It's kind of, it's really interesting. So, but they issue it once that happens, but I appreciate that. And I'm available too, if after this discussion, I'm available anytime. I think Joanna has all my information, you guys have it on that form. You can email me, call me if you have questions, if there's any concerns, I'd be happy to answer them, not a problem.
I think at this point, without people thinking this is, or members thinking this is a major occupation, we'll, we'll just let the code enforcement officer, just refer it back to him. And then unless there seems to be further action from this board, we wouldn't weigh in on it. Okay. All right, well, good.
Thank you, I just want to say thank you again, I appreciate it, and thank you so much.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Flanagan, good luck.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, it's Mr. Veale, before we jump onto the cases, I just wanted to do a quick point of order. I was just making sure, trying to make sure if Ms. Anderson can participate tonight before she gets sworn in. And reading the bylaws in the RSA, and then the state constitution, it looks like we're fine, it's fine there, as long as she gets sworn in at some point. So.
Yeah, I.
For as convenience.
Yeah, thanks for looking that up, Steph Pingney as well. I just wanted to, Ed, if you saw that she could participate in voting, then that's great. But I would, I was gonna mention Charlene, that she probably refrained from voting until she's sworn in. That she probably refrained from voting until she's sworn in.
No problem.
You can, you know, please weigh in on opinion. That's acceptable, I would think, and but as far as a voting position, we'll wait until you're sworn in at the town clerk.
Yeah, and there's like the bylaws, I think it just says each newly elected planning board member should be sworn in and taken off the post of office as required by RSA forty-two-one. RSA forty-two-one just points you to Article eighty-four, section two of the state constitution, all the civil officers. But that says town officers accepted. Me, accepted E X C E P T, you know, accept, accepted. So I believe reading that, it's, it seems fine, but.
Let's, let's just play it safe and have refrain from casting her vote. And then, you know, we've got a full board member or board here and.
Yeah, in that case, we just have to move Mr. Davies into the, to be seated.
Yep, yep, I agree. So Charlene, you're more than welcome to voice opinion, but without a vote, I will. Move Robert Davies into that vacant seat as a voting member for this evening. Are you fine with that, Buzz?
I am.
All right. So then let's, let's move forward on the public hearings. The first one here is case two-one-zero-zero-six S I T. It's an application from Wade Demench, owner of Precision Cut Lumber, requesting site plan approval for sawmill and furniture. Production business, this property is located on Old Turnpike Road in Nottingham, New Hampshire and is identified as map four, lot one, sub lot one.
Mr. Chair, I want to jump in here again, like I did last meeting, author recuse myself from this application as a board member, since my firm did work on this project.
Yep, thanks for that.
I'll take my seat in the audience.
Back row. Hi, and Leanne's not available, right? She didn't join. Okay, well, we'll go with the members we do have. So to bring us up to date. After last meeting. Myself and Ian met with the applicant, just to go through some of the waiver requests and to try and. Help streamline some of the requirements and. Then request some of the information to be shown on a, a plan that wasn't shown on the original application. And since then. They, he has hired an engineering company, just so happens that's one that Ian works for, so there's a conflict there. And they, that engineering company prepared a site plan with the information needed. Submitted that and the board has had, have, has had that for a little bit of time here, plenty enough time for review. And we did receive. I don't have it up, Steph, if, if you could maybe just join in on the review of that plan that you did.
Sure. Sorry, let me share my screen. That might make it a little bit easier.
Sure.
Okay, so red text is everything that's been updated. Strike, red with a strike through is everything that's been resolved. So if you scroll down to. The waiver requests, there were a substantial amount of waiver request items that had been resolved with this new update, with this new plan. A lot of them were, you know, standard site plan requirements. A couple of the outstanding items are still here in black. Such as fire protection details, existing and proposed use note, right-of-way dimensions, pavement dimension with wetland delineation criteria. So there's wetlands delineated on the map or on the site plan, sorry, but. None of the delineation criteria. That's something that I had flagged as a very poorly drained soils have a different setback than poorly drained soils. Let's see, two-foot contours, survey stamp, drainage and erosion, erosion control details and a water system construction note. Most of these, I believe, you know, because of the size of the project and the nature of what it is. I recommend waiving. The only one that I was interested particularly in with a little bit more detail was the wetland delineation criteria.
Thanks.
Is there anything else you want me to go into more detail with, Dirk?
I don't think so. Um, yeah, I, I think we did talk about the wetlands delineation and and I'll let the applicant's engineer. Chime in if they, after this, but as far as the wetlands delineation, there was a area of, at least it was a. Previously indicated area that was wetlands that had then been filled. And that fill resulted in a D E S. Either action or permit to have that done or ultimately approve it. And that wetland no longer exists there, but it was on the plan of the survey at that time. If I understand that correctly. And we talked about at our meeting, about leaving that there for maybe posterity or that that was there. And then noting the reason why it's there. Now, the wetland is no longer there and if they did get a wetland scientist out there would be. So I, I think we're okay with all of those setbacks as, as noted or as shown on the plan. And I, I guess, Mr. Guyer, if, if you want to just maybe state if that's what you're agreeing with or?
Yeah, I agree. The wetlands were delineated by Mr. Landry previously for the existing. Existing conditions, they have been filled and we noted that and we believe that all, we, because it hasn't been red delineated. Is the reason it's still showing on there is we, the applicant doesn't want to spend the money to re delineate that area if, if it's not necessary. So, Mr. Chair, can I just give a quick update?
Yes, please.
Well, I need to introduce myself. I'm Barry Guyer. I'm with Jones and Beach Engineers. With me tonight also is Mr. Demanche from Precision Cut Lumber. A quick refresher, this is thirty-one point six acres in the commercial zone. The intent of this project is to construct a twenty-four hundred square foot wood shop with drying kiln, associated gravel drive. Gravel drive and parking in the front portion along Route four. The properties be serviced by onsite well and septic, septic system has been approved by the state. We currently have a temporary DOT driveway permit and will be filing for a permanent driveway permit. As the chair indicated, we have updated, submitted updated plans based upon the last hearing. We are still requesting two waivers. Should we go through those now or?
Yeah, sure.
The two waivers we're requesting are to article, the first one is Article eight, section three, six. It's requiring the two-foot contours over the entire site. The area of the development is approximately two acres, for which we do include two-foot contours. So we believe it's unnecessary to show the contours over the remaining thirty, approximately thirty acres. The second waiver we're requesting is to Article sixteen, section three, two, requiring drainage and erosion. Drainage and erosion and sediment control plans. The proposed project has large hundred-foot setbacks, which would, which will be vegetated along with a relatively small footprint. We believe for those reasons that this is adequate to mitigate the stormwater. We have included erosion control manners on the plans and there's actually two sheets now that show the erosion control details. And we have noted the areas to be revegetated on the plants as well. So as you said, Mr. Chairman, we did receive the comments from Ms. Casella. The majority of the items were addressed as she indicated and be happy to go through the remaining ones. I don't know if you want to take up the waivers first or hit these remaining items that were on the comment letter.
Yeah, let's, let's go ahead and act on those waivers. Ask for a motion on those two waivers. I don't have the numbers right in front of me again.
Mr. Chair, I move that we provide waivers for the applicant from Article sixteen, three point two. And Article eight, three point six. As requested.
Is there a second on that?
Well, seconds, Mr. Veal.
Just a few seconds, any discussion? Then I'll just roll call Ed Veal.
Yes.
Susan Mooney?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Tyler Eaton?
Yes.
Robert Davies?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, so those waivers. Are approved?
Thank you very much.
Yep.
We can also, well, now we can go through those, the remaining items on the, the checklist or the comment list if you'd like to.
Yeah, if you just, if you can mention those and then have a response and that would be helpful.
Yep, so the first item that's remaining is to section four, item thirteen, the fire protection details. As they, I was, was read, the staff recommends a note on the final plan set on the proposed fire protection system. This property or this building will have to meet, you know, the, the building codes for fire protection. We'd be more than happy to add a note to that regard if that's. If that's the request, but it has to go through the building permit process anyway, so it's kind of superfluous, but. The second item is section two, item seventeen B, the existing and proposed use notes. Our plans do have the uses. I don't know if the board needs any additional information. One indicates the intent of the plans to show the progress, the proposed layout of the wood shop and associated parking. And number two indicates the property is currently vacant. So I think, I think we, we've, we have hit that one, so. The next one would be section two, item twenty C, the right-of-way dimensioning and really twenty, the next one, section two, item twenty D. Payment dimension width, that's for the existing payment, which is on the Route four right-of-way and the Route four pavement. The survey for the, the property, there's a boundary survey on the other side of the Route four was not completed. But if the board would like us to, from aerials to add approximate dimensions, I think it's superfluous to actually go out and survey the other bound, or the other right-of-way. And pavement, but I think that's kind of up to the board, but we can estimate it if you would like on the final plans. Oh, go ahead, sorry.
I was just going to say, I, I tend to agree with that. You know, Route four is state route. The reason for doing that would be to see what, how close the impact would be or if there are impacts across the street. Or how, why that would, that right-of-way is, but it's, it's, it's over a hundred foot right-of-way. I don't think there's a big concern with that item, in my opinion. Go ahead.
So the next item was section two, item twenty-five B, the wetland delineation criteria. I think the, the chair went through that, was flagged by Mr. Landry previously. There was wetland impacts that were permitted on the site and I don't believe any of the setbacks would impact the current proposal. The next item is section two, item twenty-six, owner's signatures. We will add the owner's signatures to the final plan set. Section two, item thirty-one, and the two-foot contours, which we just voted on a waiver for. Section three, item one, survey or stamp and signature. The, the site plan was based upon, or this is a site plan that's based upon a survey created by Mr. Landry. I, myself, a licensed P E, have stamped the plan set. I don't know if you need a survey or stamp as well. And that's kind of up to the board. We need input on that, but I typically for a site plan, an engineer's stamp is due if we're not changing the boundary. The next item or the next comment was section three, item fourteen, regarding the drainage, erosion and sediment control plans, which we just discussed and received a waiver for. And that was items fourteen or section three, item fourteen and section four, item fourteen both. So the last one is to section four, item fourteen D, regarding the water system construction notes. The proposed water will be from a well. I'm not sure what. Construction notes need to be included, but we'd be happy if the town has standard notes they'd like to be included. We'd be happy to include those if they, if the town would like to provide those.
Yeah, I guess I'd ask Steph, with the water construction notes. I don't have the section four, item fifteen D open. Is that for water systems or is that specific for a well? Because typically if there's a water system for a commercial operation. It might be a little different.
Yeah, I flagged that because, you know, it's a, it's a requirement on the plan. I wasn't sure if you had any details as far as how big the well was going to be, how much water was going to be drawn. Per day, those sort of details, just to give a. Look into, you know, what sort of well it is.
Yeah, I know that the water, this is a typical business, which is normally, and I know they have two employees and maybe have a client in and out every once in a while, but. Typically, a small business of this nature actually utilizes less water than a typical home by quite a bit. It does have a seventy-five foot well radius, the well in the septic, well, the septic was approved by the state and the wells typically looked at at that time, so. They won't be drawing any more water than a standard, you know, three-bedroom, single-family home.
Great, thank you. Let me bring it back to the board for any questions of the applicant.
Yeah, it's Mr. Veal and going back to the water, I know we did bring that up at the last meeting just to make sure, just to kind of get an idea of. More about the business and the, and the amount of water use and it sounded like it was going to be pretty minimal, the kiln uses a small amount of water. Is what it was discussed and there's no, no, not going to be any like onsite. Processes that would require like disposal of any kind of hazardous waste or, or product onsite. That would potentially be a contaminant source for, for dockers or, or groundwater.
Great. Any other member? And maybe I'll open it up to the public, this is a public hearing. So I do ask that. You. Have a public comment, would like to speak to or for or against this application. Just either put your hand up in the little hand raiser area. Or in the, in the chat or. Just try and get one of our attention. You can take yourself off mute. Any other? Input from the public? I don't see any hands. Okay. If anyone sees anybody, this is the last call for public input. Okay, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for action.
Dirk, just put a question, so there's no retail?
Dirk, just put a question. So, there's no retail of this? It's all production?
I believe they, if I may, they may have clients that come in looking to pick up furniture, or maybe looking to order furniture, or put in an order. They do do some furniture design, and they may have consultations with the clients that they come in. So, that, we do have a parking lot, but there will be potentially some clients in and out.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd be looking for a motion for a vote.
Staff review, if there's any other conditions that we should have on this. So, Mr. Veal, I move that we approve the site plan application for Case 21-006-SIT with conditions of approval as noted on the staff review. And I believe that there's a, including one, the state permit, the curb cut. Okay, that's the driveway permit, yep, so.
I'll second that.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll go through the...
So, if I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can we just clarify what the, you know, what the conditions are, because do we want to add water system notes? Do we want to add fire protection notes? Or is it just the owner's signature and then the curb cut, which they've already obtained?
Correct. So, it's Mr. Veal. So, the conditions of approval that were marked on the staff review are just, where the plan copies professional seals and signatures, original miler with professional seals and signatures, electronics emission per regulations as built required, all fees paid, owner's signatures, and then the state permit, curb cut. And I'm assuming, which I did not include in this, that the, any bounds have already been set.
So, yeah, to clarify, Mr. Guyer, if you go to the bottom of the staff notes, there's a table of conditional of approval?
Yes.
Those were the items being referred to in the motion.
Thank you. Just one more thing, more clarification. He does have a temporary DOT permit. We're assuming that that covers the conditions of approval for now, and that he will have to have a permanent DOT driveway permit to continue operating.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments on the motion? Okay, we'll vote on that. Mr. Veal?
Yes.
Susan Mooney?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Tyler Eaton?
Yes.
Robert Davies?
Yes.
Chair votes yes.
Thank you all very much.
Yep, thank you, and good luck, Mr. Demarche.
Good luck.
All right, let's jump into the next case, which is 21-007-SUB, an application from the Tuttles requesting a two-lot conventional subdivision, properties located at 15 Canard Road, identified as tax map 13 Lot 11. Canard Road is a scenic road. All right.
Mr. Chair, do I need to formally take my seat back?
No, but I have to formally give it back.
Okay. May I have it?
Yes, reseated Mr. McKinnon. All right, so this is an application that was heard. Last time, we accepted the application and got into some of the particulars of it. Staff has reviewed this, and Steph, could you step through that review?
Sure. So, there were a few things that were flagged, and with the new, new submission of the updated plans, a lot of them have been resolved. There were a couple that stayed on here, mostly just items that the board needs to decide whether they address or not. The first one being the need for the first waiver, Article 20, Section 2.2, I'm sorry, 2.4. And I believe that the applicant also has seen the Conservation Commission, as they were supposed to on the 10th, and I believe Sue sent, sent over a summary of the discussion from Sam Demerit.
Yep. Great. Sue, could you summarize the Conservation Commission meeting?
Yes, I can do that. On Monday, the 10th, I think, what's my calendar? Yes, on Monday, the 10th, Mr. Frankowitz presented the details of this application, noting that the parent lot was over 32 acres, and they wished to subdivide out approximately 2.6 acres lot for their daughter. They would have a shared driveway, and this driveway would not impact any stone walls, nor would there be any trees removed with this construction of the driveway. The discussion also included potential erosion control for runoff. He indicated that there might be a 12-inch diameter culvert placed under the driveway, only because there are wetlands on either side, but they are at least 80 feet away from the proposed driveway. We were satisfied with what was presented to us, and we have no issues with this application.
Okay, great. And I know we did receive a comment letter from Public Works specifically regarding that culvert and the driveway entrance. I think that their request was to have a 15-inch culvert versus a 12-inch culvert, and, and just to pave over that area, just so it doesn't erode, just an apron.
Yeah, I believe, I believe that was one of our updates to our zoning or planning or site plan a few years ago, when Mr. Colby was still, the billing inspector, was that we started requiring the first six or 10 feet of any driveways be paved to try to, you know, minimize deterioration of, of the road that's coming onto, is also minimize amount of, like, dirt and gravel that's kicking into the road.
Right. Steph, could you, could you state what that waiver request was for? You said it was 20 point something?
It's 20.24. Give me a second to pull it up.
Conservation of natural features. I'm just trying to figure out why, why it would be waived. Is there something specific in the natural features that going to be disturbed?
It's the, it's the buffer. We brought this up at the last meeting, and I think we'd asked, we were opposed to move on this waiver, but then we waited to just let the applicant have time to mute the concom anyway, to see if there was anything there, any additional recommendations that came out of it. That section is kind of broad, and that it gives some power to the planning board to conserve additional, you know, features, or try to preserve them through other, other design, design methods.
Okay.
So...
Okay, I think that that's, well, now that they met with the planning board, and there isn't significant need for waiver, should, do we need a waiver?
I think it's just housekeeping to go ahead and, I mean, I'll make a motion that we, so, it's Mr. Veal. I move that we approve the request for the waiver from Section 20.2.4 to allow a driveway within the wetland buffer to access the buildable area on the parcel, as well as, there was a second waiver, I thought.
Yeah, I believe you approved the boundary waiver at the last meeting.
Okay, I thought we left it as both, so.
Yeah, survey, well, with...
So, that is, that is my whole motion then.
Okay.
I'll, I'll second that, like I did last time.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes, this is Robert Davies. It seems to me, in my reading of, the road agents was demanding that the culvert and the improvements be done to the front of the driveway. I think that the apron is 15 feet.
Is, is that what it has in the letter? Sorry, I don't... If it is, then it should be 15 feet. Yeah, I would agree. It's what, whatever the road agent was requesting.
It wasn't just a request from the road agent. He said he wouldn't support the driveway unless it was done this way.
Yeah, I think that's going to be basically a condition for that.
Good, that's what I wanted.
Yeah.
I understood it to be that driveway permit was not asked for, and the applicant needs to apply for a driveway permit. He seemed to think, the DPW seemed to think that the driveway was opened up without a permit.
Okay.
Place.
I, I do, I do acknowledge the applicant trying to get our attention. I'll just, if you can just hold on just a minute, we'll have that discussion. Because we do have a, a motion and a second. We just do a roll call for that. Ed Veal?
Yes.
Ian McKinnon?
Yes.
Susan Mooney?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Tyler Eaton?
Yes.
And Robert Davies?
Yes.
Okay, chair votes yes for the waiver. Okay. Let me have the applicant unmuted, and if you wanted to say something.
Okay, my name is Jim Tuttle, and I talked to Sean today about the road agent, and he explained to me what I, what I was doing wrong, and he said I got to put in a 15-foot, 15-inch culvert, which explained where it should go, and what I need to do, and I'm all happy with doing as he said. But I don't have to pave it until the project is done, because it'll just wear away. That's what he explained to me. But the apron needs to be paved. That's, makes sense.
Okay. Well, good, yeah.
He said if there's any problems, just get ahold of me, but I didn't think there'd be any, any problem with that.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good. Any other issues brought up? I don't think so. I think those were the primary ones. It was just wanting to make sure the Conservation Commission was, had a chance to weigh in.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, I think the only other thing we had, and I think it's, I didn't look at the revised plans, was possibly moving the septic pack a little bit from one of the wetlands. Mr. Frankowitz, can you confirm if that was all set, and there was room?
Yeah, we went out and did a third test pit of 75 feet away from the, the wetland, so there are now two test pits within the 30K area. That's, that's 75 feet from the wetland, so we'll be able to design the septic system at least 75 feet from the wetlands.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Any other items, questions from the board? I'll open it up for the public. I'll open the public hearing. If anyone has anything to say about the application, just try and get our attention. You can take yourself off mute if you have a comment. One last time, call for any public. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for action, or questions for the applicant. So, I guess I'd be looking for a motion for action on this application. If someone's making a motion, they're on mute.
I was looking for the number. Mr. Chair, I'd like a motion to approve Case Number 21-007-SUB with any conditions laid out in the latest review memo.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, motion and a second. Let me roll call. Ed Veal?
Yes.
Ian McKinnon?
Yes.
Susan Mooney?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Tyler Eaton?
Yes.
Robert Davies?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. So, it's approved with conditions. Thank you, and good luck with your subdivision.
Thank you, have a good night.
Yep. Okay, so the next one is Case 21-008-SIT. It's an application requesting site plan approval for the expansion of a garden center material storage to the existing business of O.R. Gooch &amp; Sons, properties located at 111 Stage Road Nottingham, identified as tax map 43 Lot 5. And this is pertaining to a use, a change of use. Steph, could you, I guess, brief us from what you have?
Sure. So, this is for the Nottingham Garden Center, and I apologize, the first review that went out had the project name for the Tuttle subdivision. This is, in fact, the Nottingham Garden, Garden Center, and the case number is 21-008-SIT. As well, the landowner is Benjamin Gooch, and the applicant is James Funicella, who is the owner and operator of the Nottingham Garden Center, so I had to switch those around. So, like Dirk said, this is a change of use to include garden center material storage, as depicted on the hand-drawn plan. There are a few places where they're adding storage area. They're all movable bins, and due to the nature of the project, we had the applicant fill out various waivers to waive the need for surveyed plans, because it's a site plan update and not a full site plan change. I think that pretty much covers it. If you want me to go into any more detail, let me know.
Thanks. I guess I'd ask, we, we do have to accept this first. This is the first time we're hearing it, so we do need to have a completeness.
Mr. Chair, it's Mr. Veal. I'm going to recuse from this. The applicant has insurance with my, my company, so just out of abundance of caution, I'll just recuse to make it clean.
Great, okay. Thank you for that acknowledgement.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to accept, uh, the application for case number two one dash zero zero eight dash S I T as complete.
I'll second.
You can have that one.
Thanks, Buzz. It's a motion acceptance for, or a motion and second for acceptance. Ed Veal? Oh, you just recused yourself. Uh, Ian McKinnon?
Yes.
Susan Mooney?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Tyler Eaton?
Yes.
Robert Davies?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. So, um, now we can talk about this a little bit more in depth. Uh, if the applicant is available, if you could just describe the, the use change and what the desire is for, uh, property. If, if the applicant, you can take yourself off of mute.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, so basically, uh, the, the, uh, my name's James Funisola. Um, so basically what we're looking to do is, uh, sell bulk landscape materials, so, uh, stone, mulch, womb, that kind of stuff, and, uh, also have, uh, small inventory of, uh, plants.
Okay. So this would be a, a retail operation where you'd have pub, public coming in and?
Yep.
Okay.
We've previously had the hardware store there. This is Ben Gooch from O R Gooch and Sons. And we've had a hardware store for over thirty years there. And we still operate business as far as my construction company out of the property. So we still produce the same, same things we did. We just closed the hardware store down, um, just because of financial concerns.
Yep. Yeah, and just, uh, for the public and the board's awareness, this is located within the town center, uh, commercial zone.
Yes.
Uh, could you just maybe talk a little bit about, um, the materials going in and out? Um, you know, is it what the frequency might be? When you'd be getting deliveries or, you know, kind of hours of operation? Give a description of that.
Yeah, so we're planning, uh, the hours would be from seven AM to four PM, uh, seven days a week. Basically, I own a landscape company, so we'd be loading our trucks to go out and, uh, also be selling to the, uh, public. Um, so deliveries as far as like materials coming in. You know, there would be, as the bins empty, we'd order more. Yeah.
We go, they'd be, I don't know what the sales would be.
Yeah, exactly. So I don't really know the frequency, but, um, you know, hopefully would be.
We, right now, we have tractor trailers coming in, probably at least one or two a week. We've had that for the last thirty years, so there's no really a lot of change going on.
Yeah, and I would assume that it's probably basically if equal, maybe even less than the hardware operation.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. There's a number of variances or waivers. Be asking how, how we'd handle all of these waivers. I'm not asking the applicant, as I'm asking the board. So basically, there would be no, um, official site plan. We do have a plan that shows where the bin storage would be. And it's really the, the use change. But we would have, uh, have to waive all of the, basically, these items just for that use change. All right.
Are you looking for our feedback just on the overall list?
Yeah, I am.
Okay, um, I read through the list. I think it's applicable. Um, I do think a hand sketch site plan does work here. Uh, looking at the aerial, there's already, it looks like dirt, gravel, maybe some material storage already in those areas, so. I think the only thing I would, you know, in terms of, I think one of them is have a, a site plan file, as long as hopefully we can just have a copy of the hand sketch kept in the office. Um, just so we know what we're voting on, then I think, um, I think I'm in support of kind of some of these generic plan waiver requests.
Okay. And as far as the location of the bulk materials, um, and, and maybe, maybe you could talk about, the applicant could just state how that works with the drainage of those materials. If there's a lot of silt in that, or you know, whether that's gonna drain into that center pond there.
Um, so yeah, so basically, uh, we'll have, everything goes into the bins. Um, so the, if you look at the, uh, the, uh, hand drawn plan, um, the moment, uh, those materials will all be, uh, off to the wooded side. And then, uh, the pond side would be, uh, the stone, so like three quarter stone and, uh, just stone based material.
Okay.
I, I have a question. Are the bins, um, will the bins be permanent or are they like movable?
They're movable.
Thank you.
And yeah, to add to that is, uh, what are the bins made of? Are they uh, concrete, um, blocks or what?
Yeah, they're concrete bin blocks.
Yeah, thanks.
I think, Mr. Chair, my only con, I guess, before we kind of, I know, my only thought and question, I guess, is, is this, um, in regards to the, just the runoff into the pond. It looks like it's already vegetated pretty much around this area. Assuming that you're just gonna be, you know, leaving as much vegetation as possible. At least there's some vegetated buffer between uh, any of this area. I imagine it's gonna be pretty flat, so we're not gonna have a steep slope, uh, shedding runoff. And then, I guess just for my own clarification, was this a manmade pond or was it ever reshaped or?
No, it was manmade, uh.
Manmade, okay.
Yeah, back in the eighties, only four feet deep and it's, uh, spring fed.
Okay, just a good fire suppression source, I guess.
Yeah.
All right, I'm all set then.
Okay. Any other comments from the board before I open it up for public?
Yes, just, just a quick one, Mr. Chair, uh, the, no, I'm kind of guessing that the, looking at the sketch here, that the plant area and where those bins are, is, I'm guessing it's kind of a new area, but I, I'm, I may be wrong. And just wondering about what that, is there a road going toward that, the plant area or access, or what's that look like?
Yeah, would actually, you, uh, go past the bins and the plants are gonna sit up on top of the hills somewhat, so you can see them from the road.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, this is Susan. I have a couple of questions for the applicant.
Sure.
Um, one is the safety issue with, uh, vehicles. So if someone comes in with a truck to purchase some, uh, materials from the bin, will they be backing up to the bins? And you will be filling up their truck? Or will you be filling up your equipment and then driving to the truck that, that's elsewhere?
Yeah, so what we'll do is we'll set up a loading zone. And, uh, the loader will just go in, scoop the material and put it in the truck. So all the loading, we take place in one, one central area so that, uh, there's not cars going everywhere.
So how do people who wish to go to the plant area, how are they going to maneuver? Are they going to go past the bins? Are they gonna walk? And thread their way through to the plant area? If that's all they're interested in?
Uh, so we can create a walkway, uh, you know, that's, uh, that's, that, that, so that there's a clear path to them that would be, uh, out of the way of, uh, vehicular, uh, traffic.
And where do you, where do you envision this to be located? To the east?
We could put that on the backside of the bin, um, basically out of, they'd be behind the bin, out of, you know, safe.
So the, the bin area would be restricted for, for people who are not interested in that, um, that product that you're selling?
Exactly, yep.
Okay, I have another, um, concern. Um, I would hope that the business would not entail any more additional lighting on, on the property. And if lighting is installed, that it be down facing and not let the sky.
Okay.
I, is there any additional lighting you're planning on this?
Um, no, I wasn't planning on it.
Okay.
That's a good thing.
It may be a floodlight, just, you know, if you leave it at night or something, but nothing more than you would put on a house.
Yeah, but the concern here is that, you know, the floodlight spilling over across a property, so, you know, we, we discourage using those that flood everything.
Okay.
So if it, if it's something that's directed downward um, and doesn't cast over, then that's what is preferred.
Okay.
Yeah, if you go to the Conservation Commission page, um, there's a link to recommended products for, um, the use for lighting that will minimize light pollution.
Okay.
That would be great if you could, um, a, access that.
I will do that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other, uh, questions from the mat, board? And let me, um, open the public hearing. Uh, so it's a public hearing to ask questions or, uh, state your opinions, uh, to, for, or against this application.
Mr. Chair, may I speak?
Uh, if you acknowledge who you are, sure.
My name's Scott Curry. I'm twenty Francesca Way. Uh, I'm a neighbor of the applicant. Um, I'm here to just comment on two things. I think this is a great idea. It's a net needed service in the area, um, and I would be a frequent customer. I think many other town people would be as well. Um, I'm supportive of any small business that we can bring into town. Um, and I know Jim, he's a good man. He's, uh, an honest businessman and I would really, uh, recommend the board consider his application.
Great, but thank you for your, uh, your input. Any other, um, public we wishing to speak about this application? Okay, last time? Anybody? Okay. So I'll close the public hearing. Bring it back to the board for, for, for action. If we, uh, we feel we need any additional, um, we're gonna need to vote on, um, the series of waivers that are listed. And, and then we would, uh, need to, if we're going to vote to approve it, we would have the condition added that, um, a path to act, access the plant area be outside of the bin area.
Mr. Chair, before we act on the waivers or anything, do we need to take, uh, a vote on the regional impact, um, technically since it's a site plan?
Well, thank you.
Here before we vote on anything else.
So go ahead and make a motion.
Yep, um, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that this project, uh, does not qualify as a development of regional impact.
Second? Did I, did I hear Sue?
No, I'll second.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Let me just take a vote here. Uh, Ian McKinnon?
Yes.
Susan Mooney?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Tyler Eaton?
Yes.
Uh, Robert Davies?
Yes.
Yeah, Chair votes yes. It was not a regional impact. So then we've got the series of waivers that are listed on the where are those? I, I think if there was a motion to include all of these waivers, you could make the motion as the staff review item number one.
Yeah, I was just looking at those two additional ones that Steph mentioned. I just trying to find them on the checklist.
Oh, section two, item nineteen A, section two, item twenty-four.
Nineteen A is monuments found and twenty-four is the area of each lot.
So the waivers would include those?
Yeah, I'm just okay. I'm gonna jump back to that. Too many things open. Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the waivers, um, highlighted or summarized in the SRPC review memo um, under section one of the review, review memo, um, and also to include the two additional uh, waiver sections, which are section two nineteen A and section two twenty-four, which are added to the original list. So it would be a motion to approve all waivers listed.
I'll take that.
Okay, the motion and a second. Any more discussion? Um, take a vote here. Buzz?
Yes.
Tyler Eaton?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Susan Mooney?
Yes.
Ian McKinnon?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. So with those waivers out of the way, if there's any other questions on this, we could potentially act on it as well.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve site plan, the site plan application for case number twenty-one dash zero zero eight dash S I T.
I'll second.
Nope, you got it.
Buzz taking advantage of his seat. Good. Any other discussion on it? Okay. Um, let's go, Ian McKinnon?
Yes.
Susan Mooney?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Tyler Eaton?
Yes.
Robert Davies?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. So that congratulations on that approval and, uh, yeah, good luck with your business and, um, yeah, we, we look forward to it.
Thank you.
All right, let's get to the, um, last item on our public hearings. Uh, it's a scenic road trimming. Scenic road tree trimming and removals, so in accordance with RSA, uh, two thirty-one, colon, one fifty-eight-two. EverSource Energy has submitted a request for tree trimming and removal on the following, uh, scenic roads, Poor Farm Road and Ledge Farm Road. Is anyone from EverSource here? Uh, Mr. Cooper, um, you're not, you're still muted. Let's see.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Very good.
Okay, I've, I've lost my visual, but I think, I think we can still work through this here.
Yeah, we can hear you just fine.
Okay, my apologies, uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, uh, my name is Terry Cooper, I'm the work planner contracted to EverSource Energy, I work with Asplin Tree as well. Um, I'm the work planner for the area of Nottingham and Epping and, and the local towns around here, uh, I'm the guy that you see driving around in the white pickup with the, uh, blue and white tape on his hip. And, uh, normally I would be, uh, normally I would be shaking hands with everyone, uh, as part of my job, but unfortunately, we're, we have to do this separation thing and, uh, I do thank the Board for meeting in this manner. Um, we're approaching our normal four-year cycle, uh, our reliability cycle for trimming the trees. Um, we have two things going on, uh, at this time, the first thing is the hazard tree removal. I'm sure people in town have seen the blue and white stripes, uh, the striped tags I've placed on the trees. Uh, the second thing is we have some trimming, our reliability trimming is up for twenty-twenty-one for this area. And we would like to, uh, trim back away from the lines, uh, to continue reliability in the area. I know that there were several outages, um, and that sort of highlights my, my argument towards, uh, some of these hazard trees that have been tagged. We'd like to, uh, prevent that from happening, obviously. Um, and, uh, if anyone had any questions, uh, about what they've seen around town, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Great, and you, you have submitted, um, kind of an, uh, an assessment and a map and itemized, uh, the, the trees. And we do appreciate that you go through that level of detail and provide us that. And, and it, for the, uh, I guess I could show it, but a lot of these are ash trees that are dying, um, but there's also a number of other, um, dead pines and such, is that correct?
That is correct, the Emerald Ash Borer has been causing a lot of damage in the area, uh, you usually note those trees by the, the blonding of the bark, and as soon as you see that, that tree's about to go. As well as, uh, some of the larger bull pines, um. The pine itself is usually pretty weak when it gets that tall, uh, and when we see a lot of rotting and we see a lot of, uh, root decay or, uh, a lot of dead branches, that's usually another sign that those are ready to go, so that's another reason we tag those.
And I, I do know that, um, you had kind of previously done, uh, other portions of Poor Farm and Berry, and it looks like this is kind of a continuation for the remainder of Poor Farm and, and then along Ledge Farm, that accurate?
That is accurate, uh, usually, again, we go in four-year cycles, um. Sometimes a circuit will stop halfway up a road and that circuit won't be up on the same year, so that's how come you get trimming, trimming halfway down and then, um, and then it stops for, uh, a few months and then picks up on another part is, is because the circuits, uh, jumps from circuit to circuit. And each one's, it's on, on its own schedule. Uh, particularly Ledge Farm and Poor Farm are, are bad spots, especially with the ash trees, if anyone's been driving up there recently, you'll, you'll see what I'm talking about.
I live on Poor Farm and I fully understand. Reliability is a good thing if you can attain it.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mr. Veal, I'm just ceding myself again from the last case and, uh, I appreciate the, the, Mr. Cooper being here and, and flagging the trees and, and listing them out like this, it's very helpful for us, the Board and the public, you know, any public to go through and kind of see which ones are marked and that, you know, can bring up any concerns they might have, um, as such, and I totally understand the, unfortunately, uh, our, we're gonna lose all, probably all our ash trees in the next number of years here regionally due to the, the borer, um. The one upside about ash trees is that they don't seem to fall pretty, very quickly, they at least tend to deteriorate over time. So, and I, I'm sure that the work on these is gonna be done, you know, as it can be scheduled, but, you know, obviously if we can avoid any kind of nesting seasons, it's, it's appreciated, uh, for the wildlife uh, in these areas, um. But yeah, yeah, I expect, I expect you're probably gonna keep busy with the ash trees and most of the communities in this area for the next few years.
For the next few decades, yes, um, the, that's been one particular, uh, recent, um, accelerated problem, I guess is the best way to put it, is the ash trees, but we, we get the, the normal, the normal, uh, you, you do get the maple tree that's been around for two hundred years that has finally started to fail, you get the pine trees with the weak roots and, but the, the main thing in the area, again, as you pointed out, the ash trees are the ones that stand out because you can actually see them over a six-month period, um, go from a healthy bark to a yellowed bark to the following year with the leaves start falling off it, so.
I do appreciate the work that's done too, because I can attest, obviously, this, this past spring and the end of the winter were, seemed like they were exceptionally windy, um, in power hours, just for myself. I felt were minimal and, and or short-lived, so I appreciate the, uh, the work that men and women, you know, that, that take care of this for us, do.
Outstanding, thank you, I appreciate it.
Mr. Cooper, could you, um, explain uh, or describe the notification that goes to the residents that are along those areas?
Yes, uh, we used to do in-person notifications, which means I would be shaking their hand on their front lawn and, and pointing out the, uh, the tree in question. Now we, uh, we usually do it from a distance with mass or over the phone. Um, what I'll do is I'll walk the, uh, people out to the road and we'll point out the tree in question, I'll show the, the flaws in the tree and what, uh, my decision is based on. Uh, there's usually, I start at the bottom of the tree and we'll work our way up. And, uh, I'll field any questions from the homeowners, uh, we deal with where the tree's gonna drop, um, we deal with obviously the cleanup, any, anything that, that falls that'll fit in the chipper, will go in the chipper, things like that. Um, we discuss, uh, where the trucks might be placed for each person. Uh, sometimes they're allowed in the driveway, sometimes not, obviously a new driveway, we would never have a truck in there, that type of situation, so. A lot of it is, uh, give and take with the homeowners. Um, again, the trees are picked for a specific reason, I'm, I'm just right now picking out hazard trees as, as a topic, but we start at the base, we work our way up, um, for different, different problems, um, diseases in the trees, bad roots, uh, Emerald Ash, any type of pestilence from the Emerald Ash, uh, borer to other, other, uh, pests, um, rot in the crown, uh, problems with ants or other insects coming in there, there's a whole plethora of things, but usually I'll start at the bottom, work my way up. And I'll explain it, and then, um, they usually sign a form. And, uh, that form goes on file, and then we put their specific, uh, permission request down. And that's sent on the general foreman and the general foreman spreads that out to the boat, the, uh, boom truck drivers.
Right. Great, thanks for that.
You're welcome.
Um, any other questions for Mr. Cooper, if not, we'll just have a vote?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have a quick question, this is Susan.
Yeah.
I'm looking at the, um, spreadsheet that you, um, provided for us. And I understand what dying means, uh, referring to a particular tree, but what does medium risk mean?
Well, um, there, there was two ways to fill, fill out our normal forms, high, low, or medium risk. I prefer the terms, uh, dead, dying, or rotted. Uh, it means a lot more. Um, medium risk means it's, it's, there's enough of the crown dying off, or there's enough of the root base dying off, or there's enough deterioration in the bark that it's probably gonna fail in the next twenty-four months or so.
I see.
A, a high-risk tree, uh, is something that's gonna fail, could fail any day. Uh, the, the leaves on the top are completely dead, uh, the root base is washed away or, or, or the insects have, have compromised, uh, the base of the tree and, and that would be high. Low would be a tree that you're just starting to see the blonding on it, I'm gonna give the ash as another example. You're just starting to see the blonding on the bottom, uh, the crown still has a few buds and leaves that are coming out of it. So that's more of a low, it won't, won't happen this month, might not happen next year, but it's definitely gonna happen and would like to address it. Again, this reliability project happens every four years. And I try to address that on the four-year basis, will this tree last until the next cycle? And I always get that in the back of my mind, and we also assess it on urgency, obviously the high, the, uh, high priority trees are gonna be cut first. And the low priority trees ideally would be the last ones cut. We don't always be able to do that, but we do attempt that, um. Again, I prefer the terms, uh, dead, dying, or rotted, it means a lot more from face value and it's pretty self-explanatory. The, the medium and the dying is basically, you, you, you're, you notice the tree has some issues with it, it's, the crown's dying off, you have issue with the bark, issue with the base. And it's obvious that it, it will fail in the next, uh, twenty-four months or so.
Mm-hmm. And I have another question too, if I may, um, I noticed on your cover letter that EverSource is, is also interested in removing, um, brush and limbs, which are, impact, um, conductors in some way. I, I, as a conservationist, I would just like to point out that brush indicates that it, this is unwanted, shrubs might be a more honest term.
Um, I understand exactly where you're coming from as a, as a homeowner and a landowner.
Yes.
Basically, uh, what we're looking at, that's, that's the other half of the coin, we're in the middle of, of a trim cycle as well as the hazard tree removal cycle. Uh, the trim cycle basically says, um, anything to the, to, uh, eight feet to the side of the lines, fifteen feet over the lines, or usually down to the ground, at least ten feet below the lines. Uh, we would like, we would like to clear back. Um, if, if anyone has, uh, issues with trying to figure out what, what eight or ten feet of, it's basically three paces, if you stand underneath the line and you look at the trees and you take three long paces towards the trees and you stop, that's our line that we try to cut to. You know, um, we try to get the eight to ten feet separation, if at all possible. If we can't get that, there's no guarantee that we'll make it to the next cycle. We try, um, many different ways of getting that, we can't always get it, but we try. As far as the brush removal, anything that's under the line, um, is considered, uh, some of the smaller trees and, and, uh, some of the smaller saplings that are growing up towards, uh, the communication lines, for instance, is considered brush. But we do make a difference between that and, and, um, somebody's front lawn who's planted trees or bushes. That's a different animal. And we're very cognizant of the fact that this is the person's barrier to the road, this is, this is the person's, um, you know, it's, it's their landscaping, they've invested time in it and, and we, we make note of that, we, we try to work around that the best we can. There's a little note section that I, I write down, leave a buffer. Leave a buffer, and that's basically, we, we trim around that, we might bring it down below the comm lines. Uh, we still get our separation on the main power lines up top, those are the lines on the top of the tree, and that's the important stuff. Um, but on certain occasions, we will allow a buffer to, to remain as far as the grounds, ground cut underneath. Um, would, would like to get it all, but that isn't always possible, and, and there's always a little bit of a give and take between the customers and, uh, utility, of course.
Yeah, well, that's very, very reassuring, thank you for, for that.
Thank you.
Sorry, was there a motion?
Go ahead, be, uh, ready to do that.
Oh, perfect.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, I, uh, moved to approve the, uh, application for trimming of, uh, trimming and removal on scenic roads, specifically Poor Farm Road and Ledge Farm Road, um, in accordance to RSA two thirty-one, colon, fifteen, uh, one fifty-eight-two.
Can I get a second?
Begging.
Thanks Tyler. Um, let's go ahead and vote. Unless, uh, somebody else has anything, but, um, Ed Veal?
Yes.
Ian McKinnon?
Yes.
Susan Mooney?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Tyler Eaton?
Yes.
Robert Davies?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. So, Mr. Cooper, we appreciate your, your effort and communication with, um, our citizens.
Yeah, thank you for your time, Mr. Chairman and the Board tonight, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That brings us to the end of our public hearings, um, we do have a little bit more business, um, staff and board updates and some minutes. Um, let me just start with the, the staff update, this is Steph's last night with us. Um, I think she'll be sorely missed. Um, I'm not gonna take anything away from, from Jen or James, but, uh, we, we like Steph better right now. And we, we're gonna miss ya. We do appreciate, um, you know, keeping us organized, keeping us kind of on track, keeping us safe. Um, and, and I do wanna just throw out my little joke to the SRPC, uh, they have been of value to us, um, more so than any, uh, than, than anything in the past, um, it's just helpful to have the reassurance that um, we're doing things as appropriately, uh, and, and as best for our, uh, community, so, uh, thank you for, for that, and, and specifically Steph, thank you for, your, your help and your assistance. And good luck.
Yes, yes Steph, thank you so much, good luck.
Thanks Steph.
Agreed, thanks Steph.
Good luck.
Thank you guys.
I hope I didn't make you overwork tonight. Although I did say, I saw that you were, you had some computer issues early on, I'm like, oh my gosh, she's already quit. Short timer, short timer.
On it in. Yeah, well, I'm, I'm glad my computer decided to stay on, like I told it to. Um, thank you guys, that means a lot, um, I really appreciate it, but you're gonna be in really good hands with James and Jen and the rest of the circuit riding staff, so I have no worries.
Yep. And, and to, uh, inform the rest of the Board, we did have a meeting a little bit earlier today, um, with, with Jen and Steph and James, um, Chris Sterndale and Joanna, myself, just to, you know, do a download, um, of what's on Steph's plate and do kind of a transition, so that was very helpful. Um, Jen and James are gonna uh, help us along in the, in the upcoming meetings, um, they are planning on, um, hiring a replacement for Steph. And, or at least for that position, there's no replacing Steph. Um, so, I think continuing moving forward will have definitely some good input, um, and, and James is familiar with rural communities, um, I just learned today he is Northwoods, um, uh, I guess representative, so. Probably something very same, so we welcome both James and Jen, uh, in the near future, but we're in good hands, for sure.
Yeah, it's great to hear, the partnership, it's Mr. Veal, has, has been really, really great, uh, with Steph and with SRPC, filling this role for us and, um, you know, it's pretty, pretty valuable for the Board and the town and our applicants to have that kind of consistency there, and, and I think it's always nice to also have people that do interact more with the other towns to see how we're doing in line with, you know, other towns, so, um, hearing that James is with, uh, is, is comfortable with Northwood and has that experience, that's great, obviously, next neighbor down Route Four, so, it's, uh, sounds like a good fit too.
Yep. Uh, and that is, I guess, my update. Um, let me just quickly go around the room. Steph, do you have anything?
Nothing new here.
Okay. Uh, Gary?
I would thought I'd just highlight one thing that was sent out from, um, Stratford Regional, uh, which was an invitation, um, that's gonna be May twenty-fourth for, um, basically, um, buffers, uh, I'm kind of paraphrasing, um, buffers and drinking water, and so it's an invitation that's out there and between two and four is the time on that, it's a virtual, uh, meeting, so let's figure that, mention that.
Okay, great, thank you. Ian, do you have anything?
Nothing for me.
Tyler? Tyler?
Um, we had our meeting on, uh, May third, uh, the regular, you know, approved payroll and accounts payable manifest. Uh, discussed, uh, sign boards and committees. Chris gave a report. Uh, we spoke, uh, about sale of some town property. And then we had an appointment with, uh, Courtney, uh, and Matt Kavouchis. I hope I'm saying that right, uh, regarding Marston Property and, uh, what's going on out there. They're gonna have a cleanup. And then we had assessing, we had, uh, veterans, uh, tax credit, elderly, uh, or disabled exemption. I intend to cut and report to cut or escalate. That was it.
Okay.
Tyler, a question. I was wondering if anything came up regarding that one fifty-two and Route Four intersection by Jim.
Yeah, I did talk to Chris about that. He's, and he said it was on some, some sort of like a ten-year plan, but he hasn't heard anything. Uh, but he says it is, there is something there for the Route, Route Four, uh, one fifty-two, right? And what the, and there is a blinking light there now too. I want to check that out. He says there is something in the works.
Thank you.
Has been for a while.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, Buzz, do you have anything?
I have nothing.
Susan?
Um, we, the Conservation Commission and the Trails Committee have been very busy lately. Um, in the interest of time, if folks are interested, please just check out the minutes on the town website and you can see what we've been up to. And, and it's all good.
Um, Ed, Veal?
Uh, I do have a couple of things, uh, just, uh, the tea on what, uh, Tyler had indicated about the, uh, Recreation Department doing the cleanup at Marston Property. If you go on, um, I think online, or at least on Facebook, on the two, couple of various town pages, they posted a way to sign up for those cleanup days that they're looking for help with, uh, getting some bigger items out of there. I think they have two different days that they're doing. Um, and then the other one was, I know, another, uh, select board member, Ta- Tony Dumis recently, this past weekend, I think it was, with his son, took part of a day just to clean up, uh, the area around the recycling center. Uh, a lot of stuff kind of get blows out of the, some of the dumpsters into the wetlands area. And I think they cleaned up, you know, six or seven bags of, of items, so that's, that's appreciated anytime members of our community kind of step up and make it a little bit better.
Yep. Charlene, do you have any comments?
Of course I do. So I do think, um, just listening to the discussion about the home occupation, um, that we may want to, uh, look at kind of tightening up our, um, our regs around the home occupation permits. Um, and I think most specifically related to, um, licenses. And if there's a m- minor, major home occupation that requires like a food license or, you know, like in this ca- this, uh, particular incident, you know, that there's licenses that, um, you know, that would have to be shown, um, as part of the, the application. Um, so I do think that, that's, you know, something for the future as we work on.
Yeah. Okay.
That's it. Oh, and all, thank you. And, and I, I already have an appointment scheduled to get sworn in, uh, for tomorrow, so.
Oh. You can get an appointment at nine o'clock at night? You must know somebody.
No, you just go online.
Oh, oh.
Technology, it's crazy.
Of course. Well, and I guess that's the other part of, you know, bringing back the home occupation part is, uh, you know, we had about probably ninety percent of our population was probably working from home. And, you know, probably about forty percent of them might continue to work from home. Um, so that, uh, those are things we probably gonna need to keep up with. Um, Joanna, anything new? Updates?
Um, I worked on the conditional use permit, so I'll be sending out that revision, um, hopefully tomorrow. Other than that, no updates.
Okay. I'll offer it to, uh, James and Jen if you have anything.
Nothing to add. Just thank you all for, you know, letting us sit and, you know, follow along with the meeting. Helps us get up to speed, so.
Yep. All right, um, do we wanna run into the minutes here? I think they've been reviewed, so we should probably process them.
Ms. Chair, it's Mr. Veal. I move that we approve the minutes of March tenth, twenty twenty-one and April fourteenth, twenty twenty-one as amended.
I second.
Motion in a second. Um, let's see, voting, uh, Robert Davies?
Yes.
Tyler Eaton?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Um, Susan Mooney?
Yes.
Ian McKinnon?
Yes.
Ed Veal?
Yep.
Chair votes yes. Uh, that brings us to the end of our agenda and it's eight fifty-nine.
Did it.
We got it in. Still seemed like a long time, but it was a lot done. I appreciate everybody's, uh, commitment.
Chair, I move that we adjourn and thank you, Steph.
Yep, thank you, Steph. Bye.
Thank you, guys.
Just a look, love, Steph.